The views, opinions and content of this show are those of the hosts, guests and callers. They do not necessarily reflect those of local matters broadcasting LLC, its owners, partners, affiliates, assigns or airs. Having said that, it's now time to say good morning, St. John's County. Welcome to the weekly radio show of the St. John's County Council on Aging, better known in our community as the COA. We are your local nonprofit agency who for the past 51 years has been leading and advocating for the dignity, independence, health and community involvement of older St. John's County residents. I'm Brian Robinson, Program Director for COA, broadcasting to you live from the studio of WFOY 102.1 FM, your local radio station for news, sports and talk. Before we get into our show, let me remind everyone that if you have a question, comment or a suggestion for a radio show topic, please send your email to radio@coasjc.org. Again, that's radio@coasjc.org and I do have my email up in front of me this morning. So if you have a question during today's show, feel free to jump on your email and shoot us a question. We'll try to work it into the show if we can. Joining me this morning is newly elected St. John's County Commissioner Ann Taylor. Commissioner Taylor, congratulations on your election win and welcome to the weekly radio show of the St. John's County Council on Aging.
Great, thank you so much and thank you for inviting me on the Council of on Aging's discussion of issues related to St. John's County people. Thank you.
Well, great. Well, we appreciate you taking time out of your very busy schedule to be here. One of the things that I like to do in the first segment of our show is to allow our listeners to get to know a little bit about the guest. And so there might be somebody that's tuning in this morning that doesn't know anything about you whatsoever. And so would you just take some time and tell our listeners about yourself?
Absolutely. Thank you. Actually, my family and I moved to St. John's County in 2013 from Arizona and I couldn't wait to trade the desert for our beautiful beaches. I live in St. Augustine with my husband Jeff and we have two boys, Zach and Austin, and they both attend East High School. And sports are really key in my family. We have a lot of extracurricular activities. My husband was a volunteer coach for many years for football and I helped out a lot as well. And I am a big avid fan of going to the gym. I go to my local YMCA, so a big fan there. I actually have a business background. I had a 25 year career in the medical industry, working for several Fortune 500 companies. And I marketed medical breakthrough products for patients in several therapeutic areas, including cardiology. I retired from my career two years ago and I, it didn't take me long to begin volunteering and doing all kinds of stuff. And I was actually became president of my HOA and did a lot with that. I volunteered at my kid's school and I was on a number of committees. I've always been a big advocate, whether it be for patients or members in my community. I've had a passion for serving and I've always been interested in government. I've never worked harder in my life than I did running for office for the first time. And it is nothing short of a miracle that I'm sitting here speaking to you today as a St. John's County Commissioner.
Yeah. And so before we came on the air, you were talking about this was the very first time that you've ever run for office.
Yes.
Yeah. And so quite an experience, I'm sure for you. My, I'm originally from West Virginia and in my town, hometown of Weirton, West Virginia, and my dad was in politics. And so he, he at one time ran for commissioner, did not win, but then later ran for circa clerk because that was an elective position. And so I'm very familiar with the ins and outs of politics, having been the, the son of a politician. So, so I admire you for your endeavor and again, congratulations on, on your win.
Thank you.
So what I wanted to do is just, you know, give you some different questions throughout our time together here that are pertinent to our seniors, right? Because that's mainly the demographic that we're dealing with. And so let me just kind of jump into my first question here and we might have to go to commercial break as you're in the middle of the answer. So just keep that in mind, but you know, my thought is, you know, the majority of people run for public office, whether it's the local level, state level, federal level, because they really want to make a positive difference in the lives of people. With approximately 27% of the population of St. John's County being 60 years of age or older, what positive difference are you hoping to make in the lives of our county's senior citizens?
Great. Well, thank you, thank you for that question. Since my husband's over 60 and I'm only a few years away, the issue is actually very personal for me. And I believe that the top two issues for our seniors are safety and financial security. First and foremost, I want our roads to be safe and not overcrowded so that senior citizens can drive them safely or be transported on them safely. Forty-five percent of our roads are actually over capacity right now. And I'm working to, you know, I really want to help increase infrastructure and slow down the approvals of so many new developments that are, you know, adding to that in our infrastructure challenges. I had mentioned that my other priority is financial security. I've seen past commissioners pushing, you know, a number of different taxes that come along and I'm very much opposed to new taxes for our residents. If anything, I'd love to see a rollback on our property taxes so that we're not paying more every year because everybody knows our property have actually gone considerably up in, in value. We live in the wealthiest county in the state, so I think that we can afford to relieve our taxpayers some of that money. And one of the things that I'm really passionate about is when we give big exemptions to big commercial developments so that they don't have to pay as much for their road, for the roads and that, and that's been going on since 2018. And that means the burden for those roads fall upon the residential residents and that. I recently actually proposed an ordinance that would have ended those exemptions, but, but the, it didn't pass. Three of the commissioners voted against it because they did not want it to hurt small businesses. However, the ordinance would have been, could have been, or would have been written to allow small businesses to continue receiving, receiving the exemptions. But I'm hopeful, hopeful that maybe it can come back again and we can be able to do something like that to, to help our seniors and all of us on our roads. So those are two big, big differences that I want to make. Also, I supported our, the new St. John's County 2025-2028 funding and advocacy. It's, there's a roadmap which helps us focus on possible state and vendor, federal funding for seniors over the next four years. And recently we received $320,000 for a program called Safer Streets for All. And this will help to develop services and initiatives to create a safer community for our seniors that walk and may travel throughout the county. Also, I'm a big fan of our library system. They have so many great programs for seniors that are free. Love that word. Income tax prep assistance, exercise and stretching classes, technology classes to learn more about computers, live cooking shows. Our libraries offer a wide variety of programs that engage and support seniors aged 60 and older. Regular offerings include book clubs, art and craft classes, gentle yoga, genealogy clubs, technology help sessions to assist with devices like iPads and smartphones. And we also have unique events such as living library where participants can converse with human books on diverse topics and memory focused programs like drumming sessions for individuals experiencing memory loss. Partnerships with organizations like the Council on Aging allow us to provide off-site programming and educational events such as continuum of care, lunch and learns. Additionally, we house resources like memory masters kits that support cognitive engagement for aging patrons. And for those residents that are unable to leave home, we offer a books by mail program where library materials are mailed directly to the patron's home and they can be mailed back to us at no charge or returned at any library branch or bookmobile location. We also offer a variety of online resources which are available to, to people 24/7 and everything from downloaded books and TV programs to databases with health, wellness, crafts, investments, news in foreign language and self-paced training courses. So these programs really foster lifelong learning, social interaction and community connection. And with six libraries, two bookmobiles and an online portal, there's something for everyone in St. John's County.
Yeah, absolutely. We, we love what the libraries are doing and you know, they're doing a lot of similar things that we do at our senior centers. And so it's great to just have that collaboration as well between us and the library because a lot of our seniors take advantage of both. They like to come into the senior centers for what we do, go into the library as well. So I'm glad that you brought that up. All right, we're going to go ahead, we're going to take our first break at this time and you're listening to the weekly radio show, the St. John's County Council on Aging. We'll be right back after these commercial messages. And when you hear the Ramones, you know that you're listening to the weekly radio show, the St. John's County Council on Aging here on WFOY 102.1 FM, your local radio station for news, sports and talk. I'm Brian Robinson, Program Director for COA, joined this morning by St. John's County Commissioner Ann Taylor. And so welcome back to the show and I just want to jump right back into our next question here for you, Commissioner Taylor. In April of 2023, the B O C C unanimously authorized the construction of five regional parks and community centers, estimated cost around $123 million. As you know, Council on Aging utilizes several county-owned buildings to provide programs and services to St. John's County residents who are 60 years of age and older. We have more and more seniors in the Northwest part of the county that are asking us when we're going to open a senior center in their area. So I'm wondering if you and, and I don't think you can speak on behalf of all the other commissioners, but at least for yourself, are you open to the idea of the community center that's going to be constructed in the Northwest Community Park, serving as a senior center for that part of the county?
Oh, I'm very open to opening a senior center in the Northwest Community in that area, and I think it's a great idea. But until we get that, until we get a new senior center built, there are a number of things that we can, we can do. Our Parks and Rec Department offers a lot of free programs for seniors to stay active and healthy. There's senior chair aerobics, Soul Striders, a walking club and gentle yoga for people over 50, all of this Solomon Calhoun Community Center. And in those community centers will be, there will be library hubs that'll be offering many programs. But the Northwest Community Park is actually, we're going to be spending $22.4 million on that. And it does include a community center with a designated area for library services and picnic pavilions.
Well, that sounds great. And what do you know of a timeline of when they're hoping to start construction on those?
Not at this time.
Not yet. Okay. So it's, it's in the works and somewhere down the pipeline. That's something to look forward to. Absolutely. So another question I have for you, so we continue to encounter seniors who are struggling to afford to live in St. John's County, and of course, not just seniors, but a lot of people. But we're focused on seniors this morning and some of them have reported to us that their rent has increased by 200 a month. Seniors, and then we have seniors who own their homes that are encountering drastic increases in their homeowner's insurance. So I'm just wondering, can the commission do anything to address this situation?
Yes, that is a great question and I'm asked often about that, what can we do? And I would like to study both these issues further. And however, as you may know, there is actually a state ban on rent control. So there's a lot that we can do there. And as far as insurance increases, the county really has no jurisdiction there either. But certainly the Board of County Commissioners can write a resolution asking legislators to take, take steps that would bring relief to citizens. And since rents and insurance rates are areas beyond our control, I come back to controlling what, you know, what can we control? And if we can reduce the tax burden on residents by rolling back property taxes and not continuing the transportation concurrency exemptions for big commercial developers, then our seniors will be able to handle the kind of increases that you did describe. I know one of the things I'm personally doing is next Wednesday, going to Tallahassee. We've got what's called Legislative Day and I'm, I have personally asked to speak to a number of people that are involved in the insurance area and I'm, I'm hearing about it all, all over the county. But they do need to hear our voices. I encourage all listeners, please reach out, reach out to your senators, reach out to your local congresspeople and let them hear you because this is a big concern. And, and you know, it's heartbreaking. People have worked their whole lives and to have these kind of increases, it's, you know, especially when people are on fixed incomes, it's definitely is a challenge. So they need to hear us loud and clear.
Yeah.
Also, I did want to mention as well that there are emergency home energy assistance for the elderly population. It's a great program that the county's Health and Human Services, Social Services Division has, and they can assist seniors with any past due heating or cooling regarding utility bills. Also additionally, Social Services has the solid waste exemption portion of property taxes, meaning that if residents qualify, the solid waste portion of their taxes is waived by the tax collector's office. And this program could really help eligible seniors save a portion of their property taxes if they have this exemption. And lastly, income eligible seniors, which are priorities, prioritized population when it comes to the State Housing Initiative Program, and that offers a home rehabilitation program administered by the Housing and Community Services Division of Health and Human Services. And this program often results perhaps in a, in a new roof, which then can turn in and prevent the residents from an insurance increase or from being dropped altogether. And to contact Health and Human Services, they have an email as well as a phone number and I'm happy to share that if you'd like.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah. The email is S O C as in cat, V as in Victor, C A P P as in Paul, at S J C F L for St. John's County, Florida.us. So S O C V C A P P at S J C F L.us, or they can call 904-209-6140. Again, 904-209-6140. But we have amazing services, so it would be great if people do need those to please reach out.
Yeah, and that's wonderful. I'm glad that you mentioned those because I think a lot of it really is just people knowing that those exist, right? And, and knowing where they can save money to help them, you know, when, with these other issues, right? So if the rent's increasing or the, their insurance is increasing on their house, you know, there, those other programs could help save money in, in, in other areas. So that's wonderful that, that those exist. I'm glad that you brought those up. You know, and it is very sad because from time to time, we're hearing, you know, we can, might get a phone call from a seniors just saying, hey, how, you know, can you help us in any way? Because, you know, their insurance has went up so much that they just can't afford it. And so we've had some seniors that are, that are selling their homes and moving in with their, with their children. And it's just heartbreaking because, you know, they've worked all their lives, right? To own a home and to pay it off and so forth. And then they get to this point where they just can't even afford the insurance on it or the insurance coupled with the taxes. And so I'm glad that you brought up the fact of lowering taxes.
Yes, absolutely. And we just, we need to think about our residents and what, you know, what can we do?
Yeah. And you also mentioned the HHS, Health and Human Services, and I just, you know, want to say publicly on the air that we are so grateful for HHS because, you know, we're a recipient of one of the grants that they do every year. And that grant is used to provide 10%, we have to have a 10% match from, for our federal and state money that we get, we have to have a 10% match. And so that grant is used for that. And that helps to provide all the different services that we do. So we're so thankful for that and the partnership that we've had with the county over the years. Again, I mentioned that we use so many different buildings that are owned by the county to do the different things that we do. And so just so, so grateful. And I just wanted to say that on the air that we're so thankful for the county commission and the partnership that we've had with the county over the years and looking forward to that partnership continuing on for many, many years to come.
That's great to hear.
Great to hear. So one of the things that you talked about at the beginning is traffic and, you know, our, our population continues to increase and so does our traffic. And we've actually had some seniors who have said, you know, there's times that they just don't want to come out because they don't want to deal with the traffic. And so I was wondering if you could maybe elaborate a little bit more on what type of plan you want to bring to the table to solve our traffic problems?
Right. That is the magic bullet, right?
Yeah.
Well, I think one of the, something very important that we can do is that we need to take advantage of state and federal dollars wherever we can to help solve some of these traffic problems. And recently I was a big, a major proponent of Representative Kim Kendall's proposal to request approximately $38 million in federal and state dollars to fix one of the worst traffic problems in St. John's County. And that is at I-95 and International Gulf.
Hold that thought for just a moment. We got the music coming on, which means we've got to take our next break. So we'll continue on with your answer right after these messages. And welcome back to the weekly radio show, the St. John's County Council on Aging here on WFOY 102.1 FM, your local radio station for news, sports and talk. I'm Brian Robinson, Program Director for COA. Again, let me remind you, if you have a question for today's guest, you can send that by email right now, radio@coasjc.org. Again, that's radio@coasjc.org and we'll try to work your question into the show. My guest this morning is St. John's County Commissioner Ann Taylor. And prior to our interruption by our commercials, I had asked the question about traffic and what plans that you might have to deal with that. And so I apologize that the commercials interrupted you, so please continue on with your answer.
Absolutely, absolutely. So as I mentioned, we really, we need to take advantage of state and federal dollars wherever we can to help solve our traffic problems because as a county, we certainly can't do it alone. And recently I was a big proponent of Representative Kim Kendall's proposal to request almost $38 million in federal and state dollars to fix one of the worst traffic areas and problems in St. John's County. And actually I'm on, I'm over in this area almost six days a week, but it's at I-95 near Buckeyes and International Gulf Parkway. People report sitting through that, the same traffic for so long and sometimes they'll sit through a light exiting 95, like for five lights it'll take them just to exit. So it's, it's very much a nightmare and often is a standstill. And you know, I have, that's just, that's unacceptable. And we can, like, to be honest, I can't blame seniors for not wanting to venture out into that kind of traffic. You know, and you try to, you know, go when it's not quite so busy and, but it's getting harder and harder to find those times. I have to be honest, it's not just certain rush hour. There's an, especially with our schools and when they get, when they start and when they finish. So there's a, it definitely does take a lot of moving around to, to try and avoid traffic here. But Representative Kendall's proposal would really help with that traffic mess by putting a much needed additional ramp on I-95 near there. So that will help immensely. So let's hope that gets, that gets done. The other thing that we need to do, and again, I'm going to sound like a broken record, but it really bears repeating, is we have got to stop these, some of the exemptions for big commercial developers that'll allow them to build without paying as much as they could into our, into our roads. And that has been going on since 2018 when my predecessor proposed that, to allow those, those exemptions. And it, you know, it did not create enough incentive to increase the percentage of business that they were hoping versus residential in our county, which was the ultimate goal. So it took away, I, we have no idea, just millions of dollars that could have been put towards critical funding that we need for our roads. So Commissioner Joseph and myself did, did support that. We voted to, to remove those waivers for those big developers. And as you can tell, I'm, I'm so passionate about, about this issue. I really want to bring relief to our, to our residents and, and just make, make more, I don't think it should just be up to the, the residential people to, to pay towards our roads like that. And again, 45% of our roads are over capacity in this county. That's a lot. So we need, we need to help with that. Also, our Public Works Department has 108 capital improvement projects that are valued at more than $457 million. So that's fantastic news. And some of those include County Road 16A and Timber Wolf Trail Intersection, County Road 210 and the US-1 interchange, County Road 210, the roadway improvements from I-95 to US-1, 210 widening from Greenbrier Road to Cimarron, and then County Road 2209. That'll be going from 210 down to 208 and that. And in December, we celebrated the completion of Longleaf Pine Parkway and that was four laning from Roberts Road to Veterans Parkway. So just some of the things that have happened, occurred and then what we're working on, so.
Well, and one of the things that I keep wondering about, because this construction has been going on since I moved here in 2018, and that is at the outlet malls. I mean, that's like, is that, like, is that ever going to get done?
I ask that question all the time. And what I'm told is that it's FDOT and that's not the county. But I am asked that all the time and every time I go through that intersection, I say a prayer because it's so confusing which way to go.
It is very confusing, yes.
I agree. I love going to the outlets, but it's like, okay, I gotta kind of weigh it.
Yeah, exactly.
But yeah, but I agree. I mean, it seems like it's been going on forever, but I, I ask about it all the time. And unfortunately that is FDOT and that is, that is not the county, but I'm going to continue to keep asking.
Oh, good.
Yes.
Yeah. Because it is, it is very confusing when you go up there and sometimes I'm like, oh my gosh, am I in the right lane or not, you know?
Right.
And especially because it's, it used to be just like a straight, you know, the road was straight and now they got like little curves to go around their construction and it gets, gets a little bit confusing. So like we, we kind of avoid going up that way. We go up every once in a while because, you know, like you said, going, going to outlet malls and, but also some restaurants up there that we do like to go to. But sometimes I'm just like, oh, I don't even want to deal with the, deal with the traffic that's up that way. So, so hopefully that gets done in the near future. Yes.
Let's hope so.
But very exciting to hear all the different projects that are, that are in the works. We might get interrupted by another commercial break, but I just wanted to kind of, another thing I wanted to give you is just some, an opportunity to talk about some other projects that you yourself are passionate about, that you would like to, you know, pursue and see happen in this county, not just for seniors, but for all of the residents.
Absolutely. I appreciate that so much. And one of the things that I, that actually, well, the county did it as well as I, I heard a lot of feedback about this, but the county did a survey and they asked a number of residents, you know, what, what is important to you? And the two most important things that really, that really stood out were, probably no surprise, but traffic and infrastructure was definitely up there. And then also tree preservation and conservation. A lot of our residents are really tired of seeing all the clear cutting that is going on in our beautiful, beautiful county. So that is something that I am so, so passionate about. In fact, I actually have a personal situation that, that happened while I was president of our HOA. My neighbors woke up to a bulldozer right outside their kitchen window, had no notice at all. You know, sometimes they put the little orange signs when you know that something's coming and that, this time we had no notice. And in no time, you know, they're reaching out to me as president of my HOA and what's going on? I had no idea. We were not given any, you know, any notice as I mentioned. And in note, in just a few days, every tree was clear cut, clear cut in this, on this commercial lot. And we knew it was commercial, so that really wasn't the issue. But the fact that every tree had to be, had to be cut down. And now when my neighbors look out their window, they have a view of a gigantic multi-level storage unit. And what they did is, what I'm so passionate about is leaving mature trees as a buffer so that when people do look out their window, we understand that property was zoned commercial, but can we just leave some mature trees so that people can at least look at some trees before that building? And what happens is that, you know, they tear down the mature trees and then new trees are planted, which are, you know, you can't see me on the radio, but I'm not very tall. I'm still waiting for my growth spurt. But, but you know, they, they, they plant trees no bigger than I am and we won't see those grow in our lifetime.
All right. We'll be right back after these commercial messages. And welcome back to the last segment of the St. John's County Weekly Radio Show for Council on Aging here on WFOY 102.1 FM, your local radio station for news, sports and talk. I'm Brian Robinson, Program Director for COA, joined this morning by St. John's County Commissioner Ann Taylor. And prior to the commercial break, I had asked if there was any specific projects that you're passionate about and wanted to pursue. So continue on with your answer.
Great, thank you so much. And something that I did want to share with the, with the listeners too, that while I, this is my first time running for office, so I'm, like I said earlier, it's just, it's nothing short of a miracle that I'm sitting here today talking to you. But, you know, a lot of people aren't aware of exactly what it takes to even get on a ballot, to get on the ballot and even to just have your name with a little box that people can vote for you on. But you either, you know, you write a really big check for several thousand dollars or what you do is there are forms that you fill out for registered voters. And I, you know, I did not have a lot of money backing me, so I did it that way. And by doing that though, it was great because I was able to meet just so many residents. I actually, you need just under 2,300, but I actually collected almost 3,000 of those candidate petitions from, from registered voters. And by doing that, I got, I was able to meet so many residents in our county and really find out, you know, what is important to them. And, and definitely I heard very loud and clear that our residents are, are very frustrated with, with, you know, with the direction that the county is going and that. And so I just think it's so important to listen and see what's important. But one of the things that, that I heard over and over was about the destruction of so many of our trees and that, and just the clear cutting and, and what's going on. And something that just happened just recently, actually this week, that has really inundated me with so many emails about it and it's not accurate. And what I wanted to share was there was a newsletter that went out and I wish I could control the content of those things. But there was a newsletter, supposed newsletter that was sent out to residents from anonymous sources and it was called St. John's Truth. I don't know if you've heard much about that, but that particular one has put completely false and misleading information out about the supposed impacts on residents of tree protections. And just this week, in fact, at the next meeting, we're going to be talking about a new tree ordinance and that, and it's something I'm so, so passionate about. But the fact is, is that you'll never be told to add trees to the property where you live and that is pure fiction. The primary focus of the proposed tree protection will be on developers who are currently clear cutting our, our tree protection will be on developers who are currently clear cutting our, our county's tree canopy at an alarming rate, stripping 95% of the trees for PUDs, which are Planned Unit Developments. And, you know, I just like, I would like to save a few more trees than 5%. And I would also like to see natural tree buffers, as I mentioned earlier, for privacy, so that a homeowner doesn't wake up and have a view out their window of an unsightly commercial facility and that. So I think really leaving more trees standing, you know, it may cost the developers a few more dollars, but responsible developers will know that reasonable goals for tree protections will be in the long run, will be cost-effective, while preserving what we love about living in St. John's County. Trees are a finite natural resource that residents consider important to their quality of life. They create beauty, shade, they lower air conditioning bills, they control erosion, they increase property values, and they give us oxygen. And, and what's really sad is that, you know, it can take a generation or more to replace the mature tree. And so if we could just save a few more, that's, that's really a big goal of mine. And I really believe that, you know, it may be a handful, a handful of the developers who are hitting back with these unsigned email propaganda that so many residents have received. But I'm really confident that we can strike a balance and achieve some tree protections that are long overdue for our county. I hope that, I hope that residents that are listening can attend the Board of County Commissioners meeting, which will be on Tuesday, this coming Tuesday, March 18th at 9:00 AM. And if, you know, if people aren't able to attend, they can, they're certainly welcome to email it to the commissioners. But, but when you talk about passion and what I heard so much from our residents, definitely tree protection stood out loud, loud and clear.
And there's a lot of different topics that you deal with because I took some time prior to our show to just kind of look at some recent minutes of one of the meetings. And I was like, and I've never personally been to one. And, but I thought, oh, my gosh, there's so many different things that you, that you have to tackle and deal with and probably research, right, as a commissioner, before you go into those meetings, so that you know exactly what type of decision to make. So, you know, as I'm, you know, thinking about the fact that this is all new for you, and probably feels like drinking water from a fire hose, right? You know, so much to learn. And so, so now that you're a few months into it, how, how you feeling? Are you getting, you know, getting your, getting settled in?
And it's so funny that you say that because recently I was at an event with the Fire Department, and they asked me, Commissioner Taylor, how's it going? And that's exactly what I said. I said, I'm drinking from a fire hose. And they said, no, you're not. You're drinking from a fire hydrant.
Oh, yeah.
And yeah, so they definitely corrected me. And that could not be, could not be anymore true. But what I'm finding is that, and I get it, you know, the previous commissioner had been there eight years. And, you know, I had a lot of long-term, longstanding relationships. So I'm new, and I love getting the chance to meet people and just learning as much as I can. But it is, what I'm finding is that I'm literally going morning, noon, and night, even weekends. I had, I was so honored. I was able to attend, it was the, the opening game of the season or opener, opener for sporting group here. And so I was asked to be on the field, and I had to, I got to kick the, the first soccer ball. Well, I mean, I mentioned earlier, I have two teenage kids, and I've never played soccer in my life. So I got the soccer ball. I went to kick it. They're like, Mom, no, it's not a kickball. So you've got to kick the ball from the side, from the side of your foot and all that. But it is wonderful. And, you know, then I was just at an opening, we've got a new park that recently opened, Mill Creek Park, super exciting. I got to do it, you know, throw a softball. Before I left the house, my husband said, please don't embarrass me. But I did, I made it to the catcher's glove, so we're good. But I absolutely love just going to so many different events in our county and getting to meet as many people as I can. It's just, I can't even tell you, it's amazing. I'm so, so, so blessed. And I just, I love it. Every day, it's just something new. And I'm so, so excited.
Yeah. And it's, it's not a nine to five job. I mean, it's so much more than that because you, like you said, you're out doing these different community events and so forth. I was in ministry for a number of years. And so I know, you know, it's, that was not a nine to five job. And so, so I can relate to what, you know, what you're going through, so to speak, as far as, you know, it's, you're not just going into the office and doing what you got to do there. It's being out in the community, being around the people and so forth.
Right.
And so, great, I'm glad that you're, you're adjusting and getting settled in. So we've just got a few minutes left. Anything else that you'd like to talk about and let our listeners know about?
Well, I did, oh, I did, you know what, I did want to share this because I have had a number of, of messages and emails, and even when I, when I run into people, they're, I'll often hear about, Commissioner Taylor, Commissioner Taylor, I thought that you, you were going to stop the growth. And, you know, and I'm, I'm seeing more clear cutting and more things going up. And I said, no, 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 I never said stop, never said stop. But something that was so passionate to me was just that we need to slow things down a little bit. So I said, slow, not stop. And I think it's so important for our residents in our county to know that a lot of what we are seeing was approved many, many years ago, especially in the, in the World Golf Village area, right? That was done, that was all approved, that big DRI was approved in the early 2000s. So I think it's important to, you know, to kind of know that, you know, we, we can only do what, what's within our, our control and that. But something that, that I am taking into consideration is, you know, when new things do come before us, we've really got to take a look at, you know, our infrastructure. And by infrastructure, what that means is, you know, do we have room on the roads for the cars? Do we have room in the schools, seats in the schools for our kids? Because our schools are really busting at the seams. And that's taken a toll on everything. You know, and I'm sure many of the listeners probably have grandchildren that may be going to, to school in our county. And I'm sure they hear it from their grandkids, you know, what's going on. So I think we just need to look at everything. But I just want to clarify that, that I never said stop, just, you know, slow, definitely, definitely slow, slow the growth.
Yeah. Because, you know, from where I'm from in Weerton, West Virginia, it was a steel mill town, right? And so, in its heyday, you know, the steel mill in Weerton, West Virginia employed about 14,000 people. And now the steel mill's gone, right? And so in the, when I go back to visit home, it's, it's a very depressed area, oppressed area. There's not a lot of new growth coming in. And so, you know, to come here and live here and to see the growth for coming from that place, right? It's very exciting. But I, but I also get how locals are feeling about, oh, it's going too fast. So that, that makes a lot of sense to me and, and not having the infrastructure in place to keep up with that growth. And so slowing it down, I certainly see your point of view on that.
Right, right. And I can honestly say too, that while, while campaigning, I met so many people that just recently moved here from other places, especially after COVID. And, you know, that was really an anomaly, what happened to Florida in our area after, after that.
All right. Well, that music means it's time for our show to end. Next week, we'll have Paulette Kozlowski, manager of our Adult Day Care and Community Caregiving Program with us. Commissioner Taylor, thank you for being on the show.
Thank you so much for inviting me.
Have a great day, everybody.